Thursday, August 31st, 2023 to order. Candace in the session, please.
Heavenly Father, thank you for allowing us to be here tonight. We ask that you guide the council to do their will of your will and the best will of the community. Keep everyone safe. Thank you for letting the hurricane go around us and for everyone staying safe. In Jesus' name we pray.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Number one, the city signs.
I think it's the third and fourth page of the little packet.
Yeah.
It's the second page. Oh, yeah, the prices are in there and then the pictures are on the...
On this very page?
Yes, ma'am.
Twenty-five eighty a piece.
That's for both sides. Oh, that's for the three-dimensional, for that, for this stuff. And then if you go with the aluminum, it's for the same size as seven fifteen. So tell me something.
So that's for one at each end?
But that's for one sign? I know that, but you're getting two? Well, we would get two, one for each end, seventy-seven, not the other one. Right. I just told him two for now.
For now. Because eventually we do need to get them on another road. I think it's a great sign.
I love it.
It's beautiful to me. So are we wanting to put them on either end of seventy-nine or we want to put one on seventy-nine income and two seventy-seven income?
I would go seventy-nine.
Man, it's according which way you go.
No, but I would go seventy-nine.
Everybody's coming in to Vernon.
It's seventy-nine.
Seventy-nine or two seventy-seven.
But seventy-nine is the most business, I think. I mean, seventy-nine is...
Yeah, no, I'm talking about with the traffic coming in. Most of it's coming in from seventy-nine to two seventy-seven we're going to, which is why I asked. So just...
All right. Well, originally I told him three so that we would cover in, out of seventy-nine and then two seventy-seven. But then when I got the price, I told him probably two.
I was just asking, is up to the will of council.
Because I know now in the neighborhood, they just got those two. They got one, they got both of them on seventy-seven. That you come in and then they got one down by Haiti. So they just got two. Because they just put up some new ones. I saw them last week. They put up new signs for the... To the old ones now.
Two seventy-seven is a great idea because when beach traffic is coming in, I can't get off my road to get on two seventy-seven.
Yeah, but just I can't get on seventy-nine.
Oh, no, I know. If you have, you get the one coming from going south and then the one going off at two seventy-seven.
It's bad out there. On Sunday mornings especially, it's bad. Real bad on seventy-nine. And on Friday, especially when it's bad. It's bad on Friday, I mean, it's going to seventy-nine coming back. And I'm on that side coming back, so we're there coming back. And that's what it's bad.
So maybe we can see about getting two this year and maybe two next year for Moss Hill and two seventy-seven. With that being mentioned, that's great. Okay. Is there any more discussion on that before I call for a motion?
Did you decide what you're going to put in the middle?
Well, originally I told them a creek sign on the thing, but then Ms. Quinn mentioned doing our...
Our logo.
Our, and I don't have it on anything in here. It's got the old, the old storefront.
It's got the heart of the...
Well, that he's going to put on there anyway, the heart of the unscold panhandle. That's supposed to be on there anyway. It's just for that centerpiece.
I thought that, we use that logo. They got it on the trucks. They got it everywhere. That picture of the old city hall.
The old city hall, it's on seventy-nine.
Yeah. So I could send, I could send him that. I don't think it would be any difference.
Let me get it for her. So the piece of equipment, I'm sure we just go over it. Twenty-five eighty for that sign. Close to last twenty, twenty-five years.
The sign itself?
Well, yeah. And the aluminum sign is seven hundred and fifteen.
For the same size.
You got to replace it for sixty-seven years.
You got to replace the, the lettering on it.
How much you cost it?
No, but you'd have to have a professional come out and strip it, paint it.
Same process.
And do it.
Okay, I'll tell you.
Not many years anyways, I'm sure it's a last one. I'm just looking at that sign to sort of...
They don't, they're the ones that referred me to these people.
Where Chipley has this one, you said, you've seen it come?
Yeah. I called a few places in Panama City. They said they didn't do anything that big. But then I contacted, well, I'd already called Ostrowski and they had told me to guide Chipley. So what I ended up doing was driving to that guy on ninety. And the name's on there, I can't remember what it is, I'm sorry. But, and actually looked at ones he had done and so...
Now, this is, this is everything done in them set.
The guy, our, our folks would have to dig the two holes and put it in the ground, but it... Yeah.
We're going to have the pretty little garden?
I would like to, yeah.
A garden, but we'd do that for once. We actually, we'd be glad to do that now. That would be a progress for them. And make you happy.
I think it would be beautiful. I like, I love it.
So we looking at five thousand six hundred for two signs this year?
The money's there, so...
So do I have a motion?
They don't have a sign. And if it has one, everybody has one.
Is that Wayne Whip?
Yeah.
Yes, on Highway ninety, yeah.
Okay, do I have a motion to purchase these two signs?
Can we push, we could purchase the signs?
My second discussion. And the motion is to purchase the signs.
For your thing?
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Aye. Motion carried. Number ten, the fire department ice machine.
This is the deal to rent one, to lease one. Also on the top of that, he sent me that today and asked, I didn't know if y'all could vote on it tonight or not, but he said he needed this. That, that talk quote thing. But as far as the ice machine goes, Joey was talking about, you know, adding it up about how much it would cost to lease it every year. So it might be better to just say approve X amount to spend to purchase one.
Yeah, Joey, did you find out? You said you were going to find out something about that.
It's hard to find ice machine right now.
I know you said that last time there were six.
But is it cheaper to purchase it?
Yeah, that's what I told Candace. We looking at right now, she got this quote. The first year it's going to cost the city two thousand eight hundred and seventy dollars. For the first year because they charge four hundred and ten dollars to put it in later. It's two hundred and five dollars a month. What it costs. Like I told Candace, you'll be near about paid a year and a half, you'll be paid for an ice machine. So what I think council should do is just set aside the safety thousand dollars and let him find, you know, an ice machine. But when I bought my ice machine, it was twenty-five hundred. So it don't hold but I don't know. Probably a hundred. Big ice machines don't cost you something there.
And now this ice machine, the city employees are going to be allowed to use it to...
See, when they had the one before, all we did was give the chief our last four digits, our social security number, we could go get ice. Any employee.
That's what I'm saying for the public works and all, they, they need that access too. And I know it used to be...
It's bad, it's used to be.
Yeah. The more you use it, I found out one thing, the more you use it, my buddy, his ice machine, he brings me ice. But, you know, ice machine makes ice that just sits there and you don't use it. It hurts the ice machine, so. The more you use the ice machine, the better.
That's the same, I've got, I've got a countertop one. It's the same way with that. If you don't use it, it just...
Well, thankfully with the refrigerators, if you just wear the seat there, you don't use your ice about it, it's covered.
So do I have a motion to set aside four thousand dollars for the fire department to find an ice machine?
I make a motion to set aside four thousand dollars for an ice machine for the fire department.
Second?
Aye, sir.
Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion carried. Number three, Justice Count six-two-two-zero-zero-one.
Jason wanted to tell y'all about that, but he's down on the locate. They did not, they could not run water, much less flush toilet. They couldn't take a shower, they couldn't do anything because of the, the people that read this road bellowed out the road and was a little bit of conflict at the office, I'm not going to lie. But Jason said it wasn't really their fault, but it wasn't the city's fault either. So they, he thought that maybe we should give them a credit for one month since, that that's where they had to go dig up the whole road and that's when you realized they needed a mini excavator.
I stopped at that job. They had to cut it all the way across the road, right there in front of where Owen used to live and that next house. And that's when we started talking about a mini excavator because it was so deep and it was, that backhoe was so, it was dangerous. I was afraid it was going to fall in. And also that they didn't have any use of their water. So Jason is requesting, I don't, I don't have a problem with it. Just because I was out there and I know, I know that they couldn't, they couldn't have been using it for those, that time. Because they had been called out two or three times prior to that. And they got them.
And our, what the problem was, our line was clear. So we were saying our line is clear. But the problem was the way that thing was, it wasn't flowing properly.
She didn't have, she didn't have fit in it?
Yeah, probably. I look, I will tell you, I looked because I figured that's what it was going to be when I got there. When they did the whole, I was looking because what happened here. But, and the reason I say, if Jason says that he, and I know he normally, you know, don't go and tell people that. But I happen to know that he was talked pretty bad to on this job as well. He was apologized later too, but for him to say, you know, y'all think about giving him an adjustment after I know that he was talked bad to the customer. I leave to y'all, but I'll just give y'all that a little bit of extra because I was, I was there and he told me what happened. I saw the job, so...
Well, when that sixty-seven, sixty-three dollars, it's not a lot.
So do I have a motion to approve?
I make a motion.
Aye, sir.
Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion carried. Number four, propose to increase for garbage and water sewer rates.
That is because really to know what our budget is, we have to know what y'all are going to increase to. And we, she's got, Michelle's got to write an ordinance for that. But your ordinance says you're going to increase three percent.
Every year.
On the water sewer every year. Y'all haven't done it in...
Fifteen years. That's why I...
Six, six years, probably. I'm not suggesting you go up eighteen percent. I, I wouldn't suggest y'all do it all. No.
Joey, how about you, Joey?
Wausau increased theirs by thirty percent last year. And we got ahead of it, writing some articles.
But you know what happened?
Giving some good news about what was going on in the community and they didn't get the first complaint.
Really?
They didn't have one single person, they went up thirty percent.
And nobody complained?
Not the first one. But, but we got out in front of it and we built, we, we wrote a bunch of good stories about what was going on and, I mean, didn't, didn't sugarcoat it, but we tried to.
But the last time, I don't even remember that, real last time we went up quite a bit, but like you said, we told them. We got out and said, look, because I told a lot of people that, they had about ten or twelve years, they had not gone up.
Well, and I, I could tell you all that I've already spoken to people just in general and told them, we're probably fixing to have to go up. And I, I wanted to say, why is that? You know, see, she'd be making plenty of money.
Yeah, I got, see?
I explained it when I said, look, this hasn't been done in so long and it's supposed to be done.
It would be you.
We're, we're going to end up losing here and that's not going to benefit anybody. And especially if we have to turn and go back up on something else. And the few that bought that were, you know, it's like he said, if you put something out there, you explain it to them. Because honestly, a lot of people don't know, if they're not up here or, you know, for any length of time.
And you know what? A lot of people don't pay that much. Some people don't pay to... Because I know I don't.
They just don't know, so they get angry.
I'm a spam.
Understand it.
You got to be paid back just a little.
Well, and your gar, the garbage went up three percent in January and another ten percent. So that's thirteen percent it's going to come.
That's why I said they haven't said a word.
That was the company that, that we had.
That's contract renewed.
Nobody's complaining about it.
And that was still your bit of prices. But we've got, y'all have to raise that because right now on commercial rates, we are charging less than we're paid.
Yeah.
Because that start, that went into effect August first and she's got a no in amount.
So have you and Lee had a conversation or y'all?
I told him that I estimated, that I estimated at least ten percent on garbage and six percent on water sewer. Because I wouldn't think y'all would want to hop eighteen percent, but Mr. Goings says they did it Wausau. So I, I just, that was our, my ballpark estimate, I didn't know.
I suffer one thing and that's if you're going to go up X number of percent every couple of years, that's going to get old. If you just rip the Band-Aid off and do it once. Now, I'm not, I'm not suggesting any numbers to you, but if we figure out what would it have been if we'd gone up three percent each year and let them know that this is where it would be anyway, and it may already, it may be cheaper than what you're, you're going to go up to, you know? And, but whatever it is, if we just put some information out there, it's going to be, it's going to be better for you, I think.
Well, one thing too, if you had been going, three percent is not allowed to notice, you know? It's not going to be, it's not no, but when you bunch it all together, then here we go. And that's what happened that last time, one time before, not the last time. Bunched it all together.
Well, as far as our budget and the way things are going, the problems with everything, you know? I said, and I've said it ever since I've been here, everybody, you could say raise water rates and Gwen and Joey's head goes immediately like this.
There's a reason.
No, well, I, I just, you know, I know we have...
I know you don't, I know we don't want the people upset and I, and I want to save them as much money as we can. And last year, I remember we went up on, I can't remember what it was.
Utility taxes.
We went up on the utility taxes to try to keep, and we still didn't do the water. And also we have to, it's our responsibility to be good stewards with the city's money and the business. As bad as I hate to say it, I, I, we're going, I think that we should raise it and...
For what it's worth, Wausau went up thirty percent because rural water didn't give any choice. They said you will go up thirty percent.
And we're, we're probably end up in a position if we don't start doing something now.
Well, that's why you got to do the garbage or, or we're paying, we're paying people to take their garbage.
So I would suggest the six and...
I would suggest the six. I don't think you should go both the six right now. Now, tell yourself, every year we need to stick to this present because uh-uh, if we don't, we're going to be back where we are now.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm saying. We've not done it in years. I don't remember when the last time we were doing it.
Because I think, I think it's just a knee jerk reaction when people start complaining because everybody go in the store and they go prices, prices. I think it's just, that's just immediately what they think. But when you, when you explain it, again, I think you explained it as well.
I think when you got to looking at numbers, right? And like I said, I, I've been right along with everybody over here saying, I'm not doing it. We've got money somewhere else. But we're really to a point now and it isn't...
But we could have gone up to three percent, but we didn't.
Yeah, like what that says, y'all will go up three percent every year.
Yeah, that's what they said we supposed to, we voted that.
That somebody, you know, I, I called for motion for...
But see, what happened, we found out that we should have been going up three percent and we had not been going up. So then we voted to go up three percent every year and we still have not been doing it.
How many years has it been?
At least six. I can't remember.
Six years, I think.
I looked at it a few weeks ago.
But what, what happened before that? Did it go up thirty percent?
I, I feel like it was around seventy.
It was back because I remember when I was, when I was a deputy guard, one year, I think it went up and then the next two it hit.
Hit us or whatever.
So it's been hitting us, it's not going like it should.
It's not supposed, it's like going up every year.
A good figure then? Because instead of eighteen percent, if we just do twelve?
I think we would be better off going at six or ten on the water this time and then going up next year and catch up that way. So we're not, I mean, I would love to be able to say, hey, you know, if we can do this and it not hurt the citizens, but we can't, I think. And it's the council, us, the ones before us or whatever, that, that haven't done it. Because if they were used to getting it, done every time, it's almost...
They wouldn't even notice it. I'm telling you, they would notice that three percent. How about trying to notice that?
I don't, I don't know how y'all feel about it, but I say we at least got to go ten, ten on the garbage to...
You would be better to do fifteen, but you got to do ten. You've got to do ten.
So let's do six and twelve.
Because what's going to happen in January, they're going to go up another three percent. And that's only part of the way through our budget.
So if we go six and twelve on the garbage, will that cover us without us going in the hole? Or would it make it easier?
Well, and I'll, and I'll, I'll look through Monday, well, we're off Monday, Tuesday. I'll make sure that twelve is good. I know it is on residential, but I want to make sure on the commercial. Because you know, the commercial rates went up a lot more.
Because we can show them that the garbage is going up. Now, we have to put a letter out to all the citizens, we can't help you do that, garbage is just going up.
Well, we can justify going up on the water too.
And the water too, because we haven't gone back.
So what's your recommendation?
Six.
I asked for a motion for six and twelve.
Then I make a motion and review the six and twelve.
Do I have a second?
Aye, sir.
Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion carried.
And what'll happen then, that it'll be advertised so any citizen can come down because it'll be advertised and so it's going to take another month to, for it actually happen.
This is Joey, man.
Can I ask a question? Is there like a, something that if a citizen comes in and says, hey, look, I simply cannot right now do that? Are there?
Where you waiting from?
There'll be advertising and it, it's not going to happen for a couple of months.
Yeah.
So they'll be notified before they get to there. It's not like, like they're going to be slapped in the face.
Either you chose it, okay? You know that. If electric companies say they're going up, what do we say? We can't do that?
You just play it.
No, you just play it. I don't even look at it.
And if someone else knows, they'll just play it.
If you get, you chose it, you don't have no control over, not really, you don't have control.
And I would say, you know, I would have said even more, but it's, it's the people that have been on this side for, for years that have not followed it. I mean, this has been going, I was, I worked up here back in, in the nineties and then in the two thousand, late two thousand six, nine, five through eight. And it was something, it was hitting us. It's never been followed.
When I came on the council, I think the last time they had gone up on the water was nineteen eighty-four. And it was two thousand...
And how many times since you've been on council that it's gone up?
I think only three times. Two, I only two, I think, is it Joey? I think it's just two, two or three, that's it.
What is that one about? One that you want about?
Why do they?
They don't understand.
They're going to say that...
They think you, they think the city is making money off of them and not them paying for service. You make...
That's why, that's why I said what I did about Gwen and Joey, the heads go.
That's why.
Every time.
But Joey got stoned.
I turned it down the first time. Came down and took it to, and I had to work the tire, I turned it down. That's when Byron Biddle was on. But I understood when they did pass it. Yeah, I got it.
And I've said no too, but we're at a point now that...
This, this is what, and, and like you said, Becky, we, we, we have to go up on people. You explain to, the main thing, fixed income people, you got people that lives here in Vernon, that when they use their toilet, they turn it off. I mean, they own a fixed income, so they got this amount of money to spend that month. So that's what you run into. And I understand, you know, but, you know, we have to, you know, just the way the economy is going up.
Going up, can you hear me? All the supplies cost so much more than even when I started in October versus right now.
We approved the budget like Candace said. Waste management, this is three, three more percent and it's going to put into the budget, you know? Maybe this way we'll catch back up like Victor said at twelve. Candace was looking at fifteen, maybe we'll, we'll know where we stand next year.
I just think that he made a valid point that everything, my insurance almost doubled. I just pay it. You got to pay it. I mean...
Well, most people though, they, even on a fixed income, they're still in up yet three percent. So it's, it's our fault, or it was before us's fault that they had it up.
That's what I'm saying, it's been going, it's been going on for years.
It was like, on that first kind of account, it was like ten or twelve years and it, it was like...
But it's our responsibility to do what we can to protect the city financially.
And that's when Joey, remember Joey, that's when he was, he got the calling, a bad...
Okay, so...
Quote that the fire department sent, did y'all want to do anything with that?
I don't know anything to do with that.
What?
Was number five?
He said MVP.
Well, it's, he said he needs to...
Yeah, he talked about it. So do we have a motion to approve this quote?
I make a motion to approve this quote.
I second it.
Discussion? All in favor? Aye.
I think he might be going.
Motion carried. And that's for seventeen, about seventeen hundred and seven dollars.
Who made them, oh, Ms. Who made that motion? Okay, Britten, who seconded?
Ms. Murray.
And if there's nothing else...
Yeah, I got one thing.
We've got a, the tentative for budget workshop is, is Tuesday.
What is it? We got a meeting before, yeah, homecoming? We didn't...
If I can close this.
We go Wednesday?
Homecoming. What it is, I got a classmate to come up here to rent the community center. I was going to ask y'all about waiving the fees. This is our fortieth classroom here. Eighty percent of people just coming, had seventy-six grand.
What grade are you in?
Eighty-three, forty years. Forty years. But anyway, Susan had called up here and I told her, they didn't know how long council was still, and I said, hell. And I said, I'll talk to the council, we're going to meet coming up pretty quick. So anyway, I just thought I'd bring it to y'all. You know, a lot of people have made it before you, a lot of people have done it there. Anyway, we got two floats that are going to be pulled in for you, so...
Is there water running somewhere?
Sure must be running, but it is, it is running. It is running somewhere. Running, sound like a river.
Is it running?
It'll show up here in a little bit.
Caroline, you guys are having yours this year.
And ours next year. Our could do it right here.
So it's going to...
Oh, and for the homecoming issue, yes.
What date is the coming?
I'm a goner, I need to have it.
They've got it October, sometime, someday in October. I think homecoming's the thirteenth, but y'all maybe have it on the fourteenth or the...
Next day, seven.
I'm sorry, put in the book.
Okay, is there anything else for the special meeting before I close it out and open the budget workshop? Got to do that. Okay, I'm closing the special council meeting and opening the budget workshop. Candace, give us a rundown, I know we can't.
Uh, Lee got this to me at five today. Because I told him, I said, I'm scared of you alive if you don't have me something. But, so we've laughed a lot this afternoon because I was, I was a fussy, a fussy old lady today. According to Lee, ooh, I really can't, accordingly, we have more cash flow than we've ever had. Okay, he said we look good. And so I wanted to say that, that we're not starting the year in the, in the red.
That's good news.
The city's, you know, that all looks really good. So we have more sales tax coming in than we've ever... So, we have more, um, sales tax coming in than we've ever had. We did the ten percent utility tax, so that's bringing in a lot more revenue, um. The, um. Millage rates, we went down, if, if you accept the proposed millage rates Tuesday night, um, tentatively. We went down on our millage rate, I just want that to be on YouTube, brother. Um, but it still brings in more money for the city, cause we were at like one oh eight last year. But since the county's taxes went, everything went up with the county, it will increase us to around a hundred and thirty-two five. On what we'll get from, uh, annual taxes. Um, so, we're looking good on that. The tanker is paid off now for the fire department, um. Last year in the budget, I think they had like thirty-seven thousand, they thought they would get from the county for fire, but they ended up getting around fifty-seven thousand from fire department last year. Uh, but he, but the fire department is sitting good if they need to get a truck, a good truck. Um, they've got the funds, they should have the funds now to do that, you know? I know we already have thirty thousand set aside for them.
I don't know whether we should get, go on that other truck or not, I'm, I'm kinda leery about it.
I, as a citizen, I'm not super comfortable with it.
No.
I think it was probably an old ambulance or something.
Or it wasn't.
No, I, I, I do. Not that I don't wanna help the other fire department, but if they spend forty thousand dollars on a truck that's twenty years old.
I'll talk to them.
This was, and we said we would discuss that at workshop, I don't know if it was this or not, anyway, since we're on the fire department budget. I had, and, uh, y'all had, just at the meeting the other night. I asked Shaq, was that the truck that he wanted, because I, I had concerns, I've been on the fire department, it's been a long, long time ago, but I had some concerns. Because we were talking about getting him a new, or a newer truck, and this one coming along. I understand that the other fire department, they want to sell their truck, so they didn't, but that doesn't necessarily mean that.
We have the bikes, you know?
And, you know, I know Shaq is smart, Shaq's young, he's still learning to. And so I, I was gonna give my opinion to council that I think we need to talk to Shaq more.
We need to wait.
And, um. I would rather see him with a truck that's.
No, they have a good guarantee on it, that's guaranteed, you know, got a warranty on it and all of that, he don't just get something that truck.
Well, and there was also something else mentioned about, they were wanting trades of equipment that Birmingham had and all of them. They didn't say what that was, they were gonna.
Barred it down or something.
I think Shaq was supposed to be at the, this workshop or the next one or something to explain it to.
I think he might be gone this week, today.
Yeah.
I think he's gone.
With some information on that, but that kinda struck me a little, cause.
We're, I don't know.
We need to know what's up there, what's being traded and all that, as far as I know, we still don't have a inventory.
Did he ever get that inventory?
So, I don't think any department ever got us any.
They haven't got any.
I, well, I haven't, I haven't.
But I'm just leery of, and that's why I wanted more information, cause I, I would rather him have a newer or a new truck, brush truck.
Well, he can wait, and he, he don't wait it all this long.
Well, and I think, and, I, I, it's my understanding that the. The brush truck was turned back over to the county. So Country Oaks has loaned for two weeks, the truck that they're wanting to sell, Birmingham. So, I, I guess we have one for right now, but it may be that we need to go back to the county and see if we can work out an agreement within for a little while longer till we get a truck. I don't know, we just have to wait and see, but we need to talk to them and find out what's going on.
I did wanna tell y'all that Lee said this was because we have to have a budget for the tram. This is very, um, rough, this is a rough budget. Uh, since our audit, since they're still finalizing some things with the transfer, this is a real rough.
Real tough.
Tuesday, we'll have a better one, if we need to hold off and do, do it on Thursday instead, and y'all come in on Thursday and look at it, we can do that, you know?
Well, if we had a copy before.
When, when is our next meeting, budget meeting?
Well, our tentative budget approval is supposed to be Tuesday, but as long as I have advertised for our final one. The third week of, that third Monday, we're fine. So I need, I need to send to advertising, like, the sixth or seventh. So if, if y'all could, if y'all could tentatively adopt it on the sixth, which would be like next Thursday, instead of next Tuesday, that would give us more time to have it together.
So do we want to push the, are we gonna workshop back to Thursday?
Well, that's what I'm, if y'all wanna do that, we call it Thursday instead.
Okay, it sounds great.
Okay, I have one thing that I don't know if it's in here, and I talked to the sheriff that was at the last meeting, before he left, I got reminded. Y'all know, um, we agreed last year for two cameras at twenty-five hundred dollars, that's yearly. So we need to set aside five thousand dollars for the cameras that we have that he came.
Okay, I need to add that.
And.
It's in there.
It is in there?
Is it in there?
Yeah.
Okay.
He just took last year's and then the numbers I was giving them off of stuff I knew was changing, he threw those in today.
You'll look at, second page.
Okay.
Now, I haven't even got to look at it.
Two cameras.
Okay, well, I wanted to ask council if they would be willing to add another camera this year. Yeah, that would be another.
Another camera.
Where would you put that?
Another camera.
Well, actually, there's. The hook is for four.
Yeah, I do.
Seventy-nine coming in, seventy-nine coming in, Miles Hill, two seventy-seven. Right now, we have two.
Throw the vote on the end of seventy-nine.
I don't know where they are yet, that's not, the sheriff's department did not.
So, I thought he said seventy-nine.
No, it's not. And that's smart, we just know that they are, they are placed somewhere where incoming and outgoing in every direction, and that's why. You know, I'm not asking for two more this year, but I was about to see if we could add one more, and then maybe next year, the fourth could be added. So that's another twenty-five hundred dollars. Cause I asked, and he said, as far as he knows across, has it not gone up yet, I, I, next year, but we're already, if we're gonna keep what we have, it's five thousand dollars budgeting in.
All right, that's under financial and administrative down towards the very bottom?
Yeah.
And do y'all want me to change it to seventy-five hundred?
Yes. And I, I would, I would say this too, um. There was a, a murder in Washington County not long ago, and it was one of those that was probably not ever gonna be solved, but cameras.
So.
The cameras were lost.
Well, and I will say, I do wanna bring on our cameras, our cameras down at the Sports Flex, if we hadn't had that. We would not have caught that guy that broke in, so. Um. Cemetery, we have. Listen, when I told y'all we really, I saw this when y'all did, cause I was just giving him numbers and he was plugging them in on the other end. Um, cemetery, we have twelve hundred dollars, but we are paying like six hundred dollars a month for the grass to get cut for, from April to October. So, that's all, we need to fix it, just letting y'all know that's not correct. I'll, 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 I'll give him that correct, um, number. Last year, we ended up, back to the fire department, last year, we ended up giving a few ex, two extra hundred dollars at Christmas, so they each just got a hundred dollar thank you for serving. So could we do that to eight, eight hundred this year?
Well, we have to find out how many, where you can move it, but how many people they got, if we give them all of a hundred.
I don't know how many active they have right now, it was eight at last, but they may be bringing in some more.
I would do, um, if you do a thousand, then you do, you got a haul, so if they don't use it.
Yeah. Okay, a thousand.
Also, as anybody thought about any raises for the employees?
It, it's thrown in there for a dollar for, um. And I told him, I'd probably be letting him know if that, I didn't know what y'all wanted, but we, we were trying to get it together today, hang on, I gotta get to it. Is it the last page, next to last page? Um. Um, I stayed the same, Chad went up a dollar, um, Rusty went up a dollar, Jason went up a dollar, and Deputy Clerk went up a dollar.
And why didn't he go up a dollar?
Cause I'm not asking for myself for a raise.
Yeah, I mean, you should go.
I, 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 I'm not working out there, and y'all treat me really good, I'm not asking for, for a raise, honestly. I, I mean that sincerely, I would rather it go to, to them.
I mean it sincerely.
And I would rather mine.
You an employee, aren't you?
I am, but if, 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 uh.
Come on, stop.
You've been overruled.
My brain don't, if Lee does more, he does from the audit, then I would rather that money, look, take that, let him make sure the audits are good, and then I can sleep at night. Instead of me worrying about if I put that in the right camera or not.
First of all, first of all, we should, if.
Everybody gets it.
We're doing better this year right now, you say it looks like we're doing better than we.
We have more cash coming in than we ever had.
It's not done, not, that's in the.
But, but we said, and we said we're giving all them employees a dollar raise, we have to give you one too, that's not.
When I went in, I wasn't sure, I told him I didn't know about Logan, was part-time, but I didn't want everybody to get, but he didn't put him in there, and I thought we should put him in there.
Put everybody in for a dollar to include you.
Um, right now, I'm still not using the insurance, but I told him to leave it in there, because that'd be extra money if, for something if we had to, and if, if I end up having to use insurance, then.
You have.
It would be there, so I told him to leave it in. Um, we pay a lot of overtime, even with the extra employees, so I did tell him to put that in there. Uh, this ain't touching it.
Can't stop it.
That is not touching what we pay in overtime to Chad and Jason, though. This number that's on here, I think he probably just left what was in there last year, but, and they're the ones that do the overtime, because they're the ones that know how to work on the lift stations and whatnot when it happens. Occasionally Rusty gets overtime, but Chad and Jason are the ones that take the, the callouts. So that, however that needs to be, but I'm just letting y'all know this number for overtime isn't close.
Yeah, I, I knew it was, uh.
Cause Saturday, last Saturday, they was working.
Yeah. And maybe we'll go to a point where they can.
So.
Get Rusty and Logan in a position where they can go do some stuff.
Well, Logan really can't, because he's part-time.
Yeah.
So, and Rusty can, and anything that Rusty can do, Rusty does, you know, obviously, but, but if we got a lift station call out or a sewer plant, it's, it's gotta be Chad or Jason. So, and there's a lot of calls.
So, can I ask you a question about that animal control, because Chad was saying that it's.
Yeah, that's not, that's gonna have to change.
That's, yeah, this, this is not.
This is us.
Paperwork will be changed by, by Thursday.
Going over it, so we can try to have a, something better next week.
There was a write-up in the paper about our animal control. About the money that we have to pay out for animal control, and how many dogs and cats are picking up, she had put it in the paper.
Well, she was here, maybe, maybe she was here.
We talked about it at the last meeting.
I didn't like it.
Yeah, um. We still wanna keep, from my perspective, the ARPA money, let's hold on to all the ARPA money we can, so that when, we've gotta have that working capital for the grants. We talked about, Jo, Joey and Britain, y'all weren't here when we were talking about that, but if we can keep that in the bank. Because we're reimbursement grants on all these grants that are millions of dollars, that gives us that working with, you know, money to, uh, have. We can do a line of credit at the bank, and that, we may have to do a line of credit at the bank, we already went and spoke, Ms. Gwen, we, we went and spoke to them about it, but they don't want to do it until we actually have to have it, because you have X amount of days to pay it back. So, um, if we don't use the ARPA money.
Just go where it stands.
Yeah, now.
As long as we can keep it there.
Um, I wanna stay on sewer. If we Band-Aid this sewer, we're gonna end up with, we, we got a lot of stuff that needs doing at the sewer that is not covered under the grants, not gonna be covered under the grants. And if we don't spend the, that's what brings in our money is the water in sewer, and if we don't spend the money to fix that water and sewer, we're gonna be in a bad shape. That's where I put the, the money.
Well, that has to be done for safety reasons too, you know?
Oh, absolutely.
Do we know yet what all is gonna be covered in the grant, and how soon that grant's gonna be?
Some of them are gonna start, well. Department, D, DEOD has now changed to Department of Commerce, and at our meeting last week on the mitigation grant, which is gonna be for spray fields and all that. We can't go, we can't proceed, because they've had for several months our, um, policies and procedures, and they've put a hold on all policies and procedure grant, everything for that in the state. Because they're having, basically, they're getting an audit. So, we're kinda stopped on that one. We are out for bid on, um, engineering and, um, administration. But we can't, on, on one thing, but we can't go any further. So anyway, long and short, we hope to be starting, but some of them are gonna be at a standstill until they get their little in-house stuff done. So, now, with that being said, the things that need to be fixed aren't really covered under that grant, the immediate things.
These small things.
Yeah, like, um, if well three goes out. We have a, we had a hundred hours of overtime in two weeks when it was down, when communication was down.
Yeah, we need to get as much of that fixed as we can, cut down on some of the overtime, cause it's.
And it will, if the more we fix, we're gonna save money in, in the long run, cause it's not gonna be so much with the overtime.
We spending the money in overtime, we're really just getting fixed.
And overtime. There need, there's a twenty-five thousand dollar communication system that we need. And, that's twenty-five thousand dollars, a lot of money, but it's gonna communicate well three. And I was, I thought, I was thinking Jimmy was gonna be here to explain it to you, cause I don't really know exactly how all that works. But Ms. Gwen was here for the one meeting that we had, where they were talking about, like, well three communicating with the water tower. See, that's them having to go manually.
And do that.
And do that. So twenty-five thousand Hertz, but then over the next several years, you make that up in the overtime, though.
Yeah. We just need a way to get it done, and I know it's in part of the grant, the, the upgrade where we can take on the companies again.
That's another appropriations grant, so that's separate than the CBPG, and we're moving, that's only waiting on Dale has sent out for, um. He's got it out to the people that have to do the drawings or whatever, but they're behind, so that should be by the end of the year.
And that's gonna. So I've been asking about that repeatedly.
We're, we're gonna add, once that happens, in the next year, but I can't budget it, cause we don't know, but you're looking at fifty thousand dollars easy of revenue.
Okay. So, or have we, are we having our regular meeting on Tuesday now, or Thursday?
Y'all wanna do the workshop and the tentative approval on Thursday, does that work for y'all? Does anybody have anything, y'all wanna take this home and look at it and call me over the next two or three days? Cause a lot of these, mostly he took last year's and just plugged in the stuff that I was telling him that I knew at the moment, and then he changed like the sales tax and that kinda stuff that he was pulling.
And then there's like a few more things that he's gonna get before we have the real.
Well, that, y'all talked about a mini excavator, I think that's in here, um. Uh, are y'all leaving the rec at twenty? The rec director at twenty?
I thought we talked about.
I thought we talked about, uh, I really believe that they're gonna bring more money into recreational.
She's working at Mary Corn, she's up here several times a week, and she's bringing us paperwork constantly.
Like, there's a lot of stuff that they're trying to get going on, we should bring in additional money, you know?
Yeah, I'm thinking we should be getting more concession money and stuff like that, because they're having those tournaments out there.
Well, and she brought in, just from football concessions, last week, she brought seven, seventeen hundred dollars from that last week.
Yeah, see.
For football.
Anybody got a proposed number?
Who's it, nineteen-nine on there?
It's twenty, but when you break it down. It's twenty, but when you break it down, it, it's a few cents different.
So we can still have time to talk over and talk about it.
Yeah, y'all, well, I, if y'all can tell, tell me on Tuesday what y'all think, then we can look at it on Thursday and vote.
Twenty-two thousand.
Twenty-two thousand.
Twenty-two thousand. That's what I was thinking.
Twenty-two? She's making them sign in and out their stuff instead of, I don't have a fact you're paying me this amount of money for the city.
I can see a big difference in the way things are beginning to smooth out and flow.
Yeah. Um...
Y'all, that meeting is supposed to be the seventh, right?
Is that Thursday?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, tell me again, are we moving our workshop?
Maybe everything to Thursday.
And budget to Thursday, five-thirty?
Okay.
Okay.
And then maybe Lee can come. Um...
Now, we had a fourteenth meeting, open bids for Yellowjacket.
The fourteenth, we have to do, Dale said that they had to open them that day, but y'all wouldn't vote on them till the regular meeting, but...
Meeting final, well, that's the final budget too?
No, that's the regu- reg, our regular meeting, final budget, we're just gonna do it right before the meeting.
Okay, 'cause why not find a budget now?
Yeah, I think that, I think the, um, I think the fourteenth is to open the Yellowjacket drive.
Like, there's open bids for Yellowjacket drive.
Yeah, yeah.
What I have, open bids on the, oh, that's the meeting, on eighteen, what is that for?
That's our regular meeting, and we'll, we'll vote on the bids that we...
Okay.
That y'all open on the fourteenth. Yes, ma'am, at the regular meeting.
I have that.
Um, on the air conditioner at the, um, fire department? There's a lot, I'm gonna go ahead and tell y'all, but I spoke to several, our folks right here in town, they were gonna come. Nobody did, so I called Hasty, and they're putting it in Monday, so...
It's too hot, not that happen every day.
Well, they can't do anything in there, it's over a hundred degrees in that, in that section.
Chris Breen couldn't, what's his name? Pierre couldn't come?
He, I, I talked to him, and he told me he was going to, but he didn't show up. He didn't. So, anyway, um, yeah, y'all just let me know between now and Wednesday even, and then, um...
And then Lee should have the numbers, gotta give him time, a little bit more time to have what we need, so...
And they are working hard now, there's three of them in the office getting everything, and he said, it's, this is two years, I said, "That's why I've been telling you." "That's why I've been panicked." And he goes, "It's a what?" I said, "Yeah." So, anyhow, but he's working on it, and there's two other people.
Stay on top of it.
Oh, yeah, but that was the final thing that I wanted to ask y'all. I don't know municipal accounting, I do the best I can, but I do not want to be the reason that the city is in a hole ever, or anything else. If y'all want an accountant to do the... What's my right word for it? That part, I pay bills, but if I put it in the wrong place, it's gonna come back on the audit and pop us with something. That's just me.
I, I think that you're one incapable of doing the job.
Well, y'all need to make, make it organized and...
And we have CPA, we have Lee that's supposed to be doing the other stuff, so...
Okay.
I think that he needs to...
Candace, I've been coming back, you know what, you're not organized.
My stocks keep growing. The stuff's still in, we're just talking about what to do with it now.
Put the voice deck over there. I think you're doing great, though.
And you know we have that pre-dedication too, you guys.
Oh, yeah, pre-dedication is...
Idea.
A bigger, bigger filing cabinet.
The problem is I have to remember when I filed it under.
What if, what, what if you scanned it all and actually put it into files on the...
That, so I save everything, everything that I do, I save, so that I can find.
No problem.
When is the dedication?
Ten o'clock. Ten o'clock on the sixteenth. And Mr. James already put it on our website, yeah, September.
Are we gonna have some more refreshments?
Um, yes, I'm, I'm gonna provide refreshments, and then, will you let all of your family know? Because Mr. James is being honored. I don't, who do I contact for Oscar's family? Gerald?
Gerald, Gerald.
Just, just Gerald?
Gerald, we get up the rest of it.
Okay.
And isn't it, isn't it mine, what's her name?
Big?
What about, what's why? Don't she speak, is she still in the same? She teach?
She's moved back to she's city, sunny hills. Sarah?
I ain't talking about the first one, I'm not talking about her, I'm talking about the second one. The first one was in...
So Sarah, I'm not sure where she's, I don't know.
She's down in Margaritaville.
So Sarah is, is where?
Margaritaville, Panama City Beach.
I'll try.
If you get up with Gerald, and say, hey, will you let everybody know? He'll, he'll call Leon, he'll call, and they'll get the word out.
With Gerald, it's the one.
I did a thing, I'll go ahead and tell y'all for when y'all see it in the paper. Um, the paper was advertising, like, you know, different people could say, because football season's starting, and, you know, hey, go Jackets, or hey, go Tigers, or whatever. And I just didn't want her to be left out, so I got one, and it's color, and, um, it was two hundred and fifty dollars, and it's from the city of Vernon to support our Jackets. And she did call, and it wasn't gonna place right, and she wanted to know if we could do it black and white, and I said, "Is Chuplee's in black and white?" "No," and I said, "Then ours ain't gonna be black and white." So she had to redo, bless her, I felt bad for her, she had to redo everything to make it work.
Project graduation.
Okay, y'all usually do fifteen hundred? Do y'all want a fall festival in October?
I don't, well, I, I don't think that there's...
November's fine, but we got the Christmas Bazaar in December, well, but still, it's different, it...
I think, and, and I'm not speaking for any representative of it, but I think that the haunted hallway is...
It's gone, ain't it?
I don't think so, and the fall festival, like, that they did out there, I don't think it's done, so if the city wants to put on something else, any reason why, I just wanna make sure that we gave project graduations money, that we've given, at least the money we've been given. Because that's been separate that country, the city.
Yeah. Are y'all, y'all think the fall festival will be good?
Quick ten grand.
Huh? What?
Quick ten grand.
I, I think the fall festival could.
Oh, I know it is.
Where would you wanna do it?
In the parking lot.
Okay. I know, I heard, I think, were you talking about it one day?
You take this fence out here, in the parking lot, they got us to put the cake wall.
Yeah.
Has to come up, you take the parking lot out here, and, uh, the fence, the chain, the old booths, you just leave a lot of that for the people to work with the booths you get in. But, perfect place, all you have to do is, uh, Jason, just destroy the stuff here or somewhere.
That, so where would that money go, just straight back to the city?
Or the rec, whatever, y'all?
I would, uh...
But that's, and do you think that's a rec, is it a rec thing?
Wouldn't it be better to do it with the rec?
Huh?
Well, I, I, I was gonna, that's what I was gonna say, if Nikki could help, you know what I mean, could help.
Yeah, well, what I was thinking about was, and not taking anything away from rec, y'all wanna do it that way, but all the other things that we could do, like project graduation, getting the money up, you know, to do different things, if, if we send it into certain, if it goes into the general fund. I, I don't care if y'all wanna let rec do it all, or rec get all the money or not, I was just thinking as far as being able to do other things.
But we could split it. Or y'all might could, also, you could split it and maybe do some kind of scholarship to a Vernon student or something, even if it's five hundred dollars at paper books.
Do, do we have school boards in this? I know Joey said before it'd get approved, but it never got approved. That's just the situation we had, and two of the school boards has been approved. The recreation department, none of them's here, and I'm glad we got a couple of weeks, but we advance to the recreation department down there. While it's having tournaments and all, we have to have school boards, that's the first thing, to have tournaments down there. The thing they got going on around now, the co-ed doing, it's, it speaks to, speaks big time. Uh, they got so many people has responded, they've played, and they got, well, they played, y'all played last, this past weekend. Several of them went and played, uh, tournaments all, uh, this past weekend, but I don't care what we do with the money, the thing is, I do know fall festival, it's called Quadruple of Haunted House Schools, uh, they got the conflict, the two that we're running at, and, uh, they've no way to just throw it down. I'd like the city to pick it up, the city's gonna spend a little bit of money, start off with a plywood, with a boost and all, but the thing is, you'll take it down and put it up and market.
Well, and elementary school, we used to do it every year, and they, they don't do that anymore.
What, elementary school? So you gonna have, when you advertise, Mr. Gould, advertise now, you gonna have, I'm talking about. I'd have forgotten what Jamie told me, uh, a couple hours, it was thirty-five thousand, she made a couple hours.
Well, Carolyn is a big part of the haunted hallway, and I know she can tell you that it would, somebody was a net sieve or something, and that's why y'all didn't do it the last couple of years.
Well... No.
It was a lot of things, but then you could get people to work.
Yeah.
And, you know, if you don't have volunteers, you just can't do it.
Yeah, same thing you'll run into with, uh, fall festival, but, you know, I don't mind working the fall festival or not, whatever, you know, uh... We consist of cake walls, I always been cake walls, oysters, and, you know, uh, the booths, but you can buy that stuff, cheap, uh, big organizations and all, uh, but... You know, if the city starts it, I want the city to continue on, because it's a big thing, it's a big ordeal, the fall festival is now.
Well, and we're, we want them to, we've got the Fourth of July, we've got the Christmas Bazaar, it would be nice to have something.
In between.
And we have Easter, so that would kinda hit every season.
Plenty of money to be made, we just, you know, have to do it.
And we could put the money back in if it's red.
Well, I, I'm asking though, before I ask Nikki if she's gonna help with it, is any of the money gonna go to rec?
Well, this, this is another thing you're gonna look at, this coming year is gonna be the recreation, biggest year was reelection, year coming up. Uh, all the people that runs is, uh, they sell advertisements, you know, two fifty, so rec's gonna make plenty of money this coming year, uh, reelection, but, uh... They on the right track, the rec department is, uh, but, uh, it just takes time, you know, uh...
So, I guess what Candace is asking is, do we wanna do like a fifty-fifty with them and keep part of the money to do something else, or?
Well, um, you can look at rec department, but the city, uh, project graduation, they don't give no money, no funds, no. Uh, we need to look at how much money you wanna set aside every year for project graduation.
We just said fifteen hundred.
I'd like the city a scholarship, give the city a, in honor of somebody, whoever, you know, it don't have to be in honor of somebody, but, uh, it just lets go on the city. You know, if we give a thousand dollars, you know, you gonna make it.
Well, and it helps the students too, I mean, we, there's some students that work really, really hard to get the grades and, and do the things that they do, and a lot of them, you know, can't afford to do some of the stuff that they're doing, you know.
I can say that even, as far as that goes, even if the school was a hundred percent paid for because they got a hundred percent, um...
Throughout the year.
Scholarships. Because my ki-, you know, my kids, they, they did, they worked hard in school, but then you gotta have a place for them to live if they go somewhere, or you gotta have gas if they, if they're here. That adds up real quick, if you drive to Mariana four days a week, or if you go around an apartment and it's a hole for eight or nine hundred dollars a month, that adds up quick. So a thousand, even if it is a thousand dollars, that would pay for their gas for the semester.
So what we need to figure out is what we wanna do, when we wanna do it, instead of every year like we did a Christmas Bazaar.
And the Christmas is the second Saturday of December every year?
Yeah. So y'all wanna talk more about, think about, talk more about it that day?
It's just that we, if we're gonna do it, I wanna kinda start working on it, and y'all can come up with the details, but I do wanna start working on it so it's not the last minute.
Yeah.
Are y'all looking at end of October or November?
October, because, uh, that Christmas Bazaar, you'll run into that kind of, because this is...
So the end of October, last Saturday of October?
Sounds good.
Okay.
Is there something y'all wanna do on Halloween, like, to go on sale the trickery? See, you got Halloween that weekend, that, that's right, Halloween.
Can be like the rent spot.
Well, like a trick or treat, you could have that too.
What day is the thirty-first dawn this year?
We usually do trick or treat on the night of Halloween here, unless it's a Sunday.
Halloween is on a Tuesday night.
I say a weekend, because they come in, if it's Halloween, they come in for free stuff.
Right.
I'm just saying.
It's the twenty-eighth, the twenty-eighth is the last Saturday.
Twenty, are we talking about a two-day deal, like a Friday and Saturday? Or, or one day? Just a Saturday.
If we just do a Saturday from three to eight, everybody gonna be wore out by the time eight o'clock gets here anyway. But we can have oysters, we can have Dunkin' boots, we can have boiled peanuts, you know, probably do a hayride around...
Popcoy.
Hayride around the...
The, the pony ride.
Pony rides, um...
But the cake wall could be your money maker.
Cake wall.
Well, you said the fall festival, that thing would bring in six grand, ten thousand.
That cake wall, I think it'd be about that, they don't participate in that.
A live Saturday's the twenty-eighth, or the first weekend of November's the fourth.
I think the twenty-eighth is the...
October twenty-eighth.
Yeah, she better be, it's, not, I'm serious, really, they have one at the middle school, and I was telling my last daughter, bakes cakes, but I know we donated a couple. They had one out at the middle school for something, and her grandson taught her to bake a cheese with a cake wall, and those two cakes, they bring it all to make, um, two cakes. Just because people know who she is, and they have eaten her cakes.
Well, and on election time, they could pay a hundred or two hundred dollars for a cake.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
I ain't running for nothing, because I don't need a five hundred dollar cake.
This is a good year too for our raises and stuff.
It's a good year for everybody, and I think we can take it back to Joe's best, we can...
And the Easter stuff, they give a lot this year, we don't have to worry, because there are all kinds of donations for that.
Maybe looking at Joey or something.
Yeah, you gotta get out there, buddy.
I'm looking at this floor.
Oh, that, I don't, he was supposed to put that, is that in there, because I said fifteen thousand for the floor, because I don't know what it's gonna cost.
For what?
It's buckled.
I bet it's more than that.
For what?
The floor.
I'm thinking...
Well, I, I don't hear if you guys been getting estimates.
I'm gonna tell y'all, I know that there's been several estimates done. Well, I know that several people have been asked over and over to do an estimate and some, and they're like, I ain't bothering doing an estimate, because they don't do nothing about it, I'm being honest. We're gonna, y'all gonna do it, we're gonna do it, because they're not gonna keep coming and giving a estimate.
Yeah.
It's gotta be done.
It's gotta be paid.
But that was one of the things, we've already looked at the city hall fund, there's plenty of money in there to make.
If we don't do anything to take the carpet up and put it down and put carpet back on, but I think that there's...
I think we could be better off if it's getting warmer now.
Well, I think it's gonna be buckled if there is.
Well, I'll blow it to you.
No, but...
Is the room, your house, your council room still a little, like that?
If y'all give me permission and don't care, I will rip this carpet up and see.
Pull it up in summer.
And see what's under it.
Back Gorman's office and see what's there. No, I'm not telling you to do it, ask one of the guys to...
One of the ladies, get them.
That, I think, actually don't have carpet in it.
But I, y'all, I think that, that, I think...
Well, they could pull it up with the corner over there and see what's under it.
And even if we have a mountain.
With that wood under here, I don't.
So, for estimate-wise, if there's hardwood and it can be fixed, y'all want an estimate to do that here. If there's not, do you want carpet or?
No.
Live profile?
Carpet anymore.
We got that lifetime.
What you got out there?
Flags now.
Flags. They easier, take care, much easier.
Well, you got slicker than she is.
She need to get that water dripping.
Yeah, the water's coming from all the vents, it is dripping from all the vents. Okay.
Is there anything else? Have you got anything else?
I'll forget, I'll remember.
So we all know, so we all know what we got to be thinking about everything, and our meeting has been moved to Thursday.
But please, for real, if you think of something, let me know.
So there's no meeting on Tuesday? There's no meeting on Tuesday?
There's no meeting on Tuesday, it's gonna be on Thursday, five-thirty.
I thought you were saying in addition to earlier.
No.
Can I have a motion to adjourn?
I might motion to adjourn.
One second, discussion, on a favor?
No, we can come one time.